I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin our meeting with our consent items. That includes minutes from the November 15th, 2021, regular board meeting, minutes from the December 9th, 2021 study session. Let's take just the minutes together first. So are there any additions or corrections for those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
Salute.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Then we have the financial report, so we'll start with the funds report. Tom.
Okay, so the end of November, the education fund, or in November, we had receipts of $1,62,218.64, and expenses in November of $1,558,663.28. Our balance at the end of November was $1,073,206.25. In the debt service fund, we had receipts of $5,999.76. There were no expenses in November. Cash balance at the end of November in the debt service fund was $1,581,395.89. In the operations fund in November, we had receipts of $6,276.07. We had expenses of $381,714.80, and our cash balance at the end of November was $346,007.59.
Any questions from the board?
And if I may, just remind the board that everything that is reflected here in regards to COVID and what we are paying out of educational fund for substitute teachers, out of operational funds for overtime, for additional masks, for cleaning, for all of those services, continue to come out of Rochester's funds. We have yet to make any request for transfer from the S.R. or the CARES money as we are still working with FEMA to get those funds in. And then also in education fund, the reason for the increase is the retro pay as we settled the teacher contract and we distributed the retro pay. So that's why that is a bit higher this month as well.
Let's, good, let's see. Let's do all of the financial report together. So let's continue on with the resolution to close 2021 year end. I did, I think, if I was reading it correctly here, that there just does need, okay, yeah, before we sign it off, there, in the middle, there's just a 2020 accounting year that should be 2021 accounting year, I believe. It was changed to, this is obviously a standing resolution, or a very, we do this at the end of every year, so, but that just needs to be, I just saw that before it came. So this resolution adopted by the Board of School Trustees of the Rochester Community School Corporation of Fulton County, Indiana, whereas necessary transfers will need to be made from one major budget classification to other major budget classifications in the education fund and operations fund prior to 2021 year ending closing, and whereas other transfers may be needed between funds before the close of 2021, therefore be it resolved with the Board of School Trustees hereby authorizes the treasurer to make all necessary transfers prior to the closing of the 2021 accounting year. The Board of School Trustees further directs the treasurer to submit a report designating the actual transfers upon the final close of the 2021 accounting year. Again, this is because we won't have another meeting before year end, and this gives authority to Todd to make the necessary transfers so that everything gets paid as it should be. And then he will present a report to us in January. Are there any questions from the board regarding this? Okay. And let's also look at the claims. We have approval of claims from November 16th through 30th, 2021, totaling $1,328,870.43. And December 1st through 17th, 2021, totaling $1,509,164.29. We just had the chance to look through those. Any questions regarding those claims? Okay. And then approval of payroll for November 19th, December 3rd, and December 17th, 2021. As Mrs. Manz said, that included the retro pay after the teacher contract was settled. It did appear that it probably included some ECA pay as well, so that's for the variation there. November 19th, 2021, in the amount of $743,822.46. December 3rd, 2021, in the amount of $579,559.63. And December 17th, 2021, in the amount of $505,791.92. Any questions from the board on that? Okay, well then I will entertain a motion to approve the financial report, which includes the funds report, funds report, the resolution to close 2020 year end, claims and payroll.
Jenny, you want to take a vote for the resolution to be separate?
Okay, so let's do the financial report, which would include the funds report, approval of claims, and payroll then.
Salute.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six zero. Okay, then let's go back to the resolution. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution to close 2021 year end?
Salute.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Kyle Renssberger. Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Then we have donations, many donations. We're thankful for all of them as always. Columbia Elementary's nurse received $100 donation for student needs from the Ruth Missionary Circle at Bethlehem Baptist Church. Chad Seibert donated $200 to Rochester Middle School for the PBIS program. Multiple bags of clothing to the Rochester Middle School nurse for use for students for the formal dinner. That is an unattributed one. Rochester Middle School nurse received $1,000 in Walmart gift cards to use at her discretion as needed for students. Band concert audience gifts of $146 to the RMS Band. Brenda McLean at Columbia Elementary received a donation of $1,100 from Mill Creek Church to purchase each of Columbia's students a book. Columbia Elementary received a donation from the Builders Association of North Central Indiana in the amount of $600 for winter coats and gear needed for students. Riddle Elementary received a donation from the Builders Association of North Central Indiana in the amount of $600 for winter coats and gear needed for students. Were there two different band concert reporting events?
Two separate, yes.
Oh, for the RMS Band, I'm sorry, and then the RHS Band. So this is band concert audience gifts of $153 for the RMS Band, or excuse me, RHS Band. Columbia Elementary received six bags of personal hygiene products for students and parents as a donation from Grace United Methodist Church. Columbia Elementary received a donation of $85 from Franger Gas employees for student needs, as did Riddle Elementary, $85 from Franger Gas employees. Community Presbyterian Church of Rochester donated $1,100 to the Backpack Food Program. Rochester Metal Products donated multiple toys for Columbia and Riddle students through a toy drag. Kelsey Forman donated $20 to Columbia Elementary for student needs. And there's a $50 donation to the Rochester High School Endowment Fund. The Rochester High School Endowment Fund donated, no. Rochester School Corporation donated $50 to the Rochester High School Endowment Fund. So that needs to be, we need to correct that in honor of Ted Wagner and his service to the corporation.
Hey Jenny, did you get number 10? I'm sorry. You need it, I was looking down.
I didn't hear what Jason said.
Number 10, you read that one, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You did, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Oh, there's.
I'm losing my mind.
Columbia had a lot of donations to make sure that we got, that we had this one. Our community definitely comes out in support of our students, and we are very, very thankful. Any other ones that I missed?
At the end of the day, Mrs. Shali and Jason and I were working with the Outlet Youth Center in regards to toys to be brought into the district tomorrow as well for distribution to students in need. So we'll be working more closely with them. Tomorrow they're going to be bringing those into the district for distribution.
Okay, so donation from the outlet of toys for student needs.
One thing I've noticed over the years at December meetings is the spirit of giving increases, and that's so good to see, and very much appreciated.
All right. I blast a motion to approve these donations.
Salute.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any questions about them? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you again. Then we have a second reading of policies. And thank you, Mrs. Reinhold, for attaching all these policies too, so that makes it easy. Anyone that wants to read them can go on to zebras.net, go to Board, Public Information, our meeting agenda, and those policies are all linked there. And that includes 312004, 4122, 5517, 5630.01, 5630.2, 6610, 7510, 8315. And we discussed these and discussed the ones that we'll mention next at our previous study session. Does the board have any questions about those? Okay. And then the first reading of policies, these were also discussed at our study session. Most of these are technical changes or changes that need to be made because of court cases or laws that have changed. First reading of policies, 1220, 1520, 2262, 2603, 3120.08, 3120.11, 3214, 3220, 4120.08, 4214, 5113.02, 5340.01, 5460, 5540, 6105, 6220, 7310, 7540.03, 7540.04, 8305, 8455, 8600. Any changes to any of those or anything that you need to go over? Any questions from the board on those? We have as a line item here, this isn't anything we're voting on either right now, but the Richland Township Board of Trustees and the school board seat, that's something we've been discussing for a little bit.
So just as an update, I did contact Christina Seiler in regards to helping with an article with Tom Schwank and Mark and Betty Martens, just to keep that in the forefront of the public's mind. Didn't know if there were any more questions or concerns in regards to the board, or Tom, any information you would like to share or updates that you'd like to share?
Yes, we're looking at January 11th at 7:00 PM at the museum in the Christian Center Memorial Hall part. That will be their monthly trustee meeting with their advisory board, and then we'll present to the community and invite the Richland Township community, that's who it affects, to come and listen and add any comments or concerns. We'll try to get that out so people hear about it.
What time is that?
7:00 PM, January 11th, that's a Tuesday evening.
Tom, will that meeting be available on Zoom?
Pardon?
Will that meeting be available on Zoom, do you know?
I don't think so. I don't think they ever head out there.
We will advertise it as a school board meeting as well, because I know that we have several school board members who would like to attend, and if we have a quorum, it needs to be listed as a meeting, but we won't have any business. Our position will be there to listen and answer questions if needed, but we are tagging along on their meeting. Any other questions or comments from the board on that? Okay. Liquidation of surplus items from Riddle, so it looks like Mr. Bernacki got the cleaning bug after he saw Mrs. Murphy was doing that.
That is correct. He wasn't able to be here this evening, but did list, just as we've asked each of the principals to do, as we're trying to clean out some areas to utilize for additional space or classroom space. So he has listed what he feels needs to be scrapped. We're working on items for auction and then what needs to go into storage, recycling, and then the donation of the fourth grade novels. He is also working with the Outlet Youth Center. They're hosting some tutorial sessions, so those would be greatly appreciated there to help with what they're doing there at the Outlet Youth Center. And then also we pair up with some churches that do some teaching services as well.
Any comments or questions from the board on that? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of liquidation of surplus items for Riddle.
Salute.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Kyle Renssberger. Any further questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. COVID updates.
Liz, working with Beth Stagerall today, our head nurse, these are the updated numbers since our last study session, so this would be over the last two weeks. At Columbia, we have no staff members who are quarantined or positive at this time. One student positive, 12 students quarantined. This was as of 10 o'clock this morning. Obviously data can change throughout the day, but this was for our conversation at 10:00 AM this morning. Riddle, one staff quarantined, no staff positive. At Riddle, we have one student positive, 10 students quarantined. Middle, no staff quarantined or positive. Two students positive, with 14 students quarantined. At the high school, no student quarantined nor, I'm sorry, no staff quarantine nor positive staff members. Two students positive, 18 students quarantined. Of all of those that are quarantined throughout the district, only three were within, were close contacts within the district. Everything else has been reported from outside. So I commend the buildings, the principals, the teachers and staff, and students, to continue to keep those numbers down as best we can within the district. And it's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to ensure that that happens, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Personnel report. Heather Schaefer, fourth grade maternity leave at Riddle Elementary, daily rate of $140. Dawn Howard, fourth grade maternity leave at Riddle Elementary, daily rate of $140. Sarah Hummel, special needs instructional assistant for Columbia at an hourly rate of $12.59. Tabitha Small, instructional assistant at RHS, hourly rate of $12. Raven Reese, instructional assistant at RHS, hourly rate of $12 an hour. Isabella, how do you say Isabella's last name?
Inglesby.
Thank you. Instructional assistant at RHS for hourly rate of $12 an hour. And then we have a new Spanish teacher. Would you help me pronounce his name too?
We're gonna go Javier.
Okay!
That's how I've been describing everybody else.
Javier, and I will work, I took German in high school, so I, it does not look any much good. Even when traveling in Germany, it didn't do me very good, so I will work on that Javier. But we are thankful to have him in his recommendations, as he has a master's in economics, brings multiple skill set to RHS, salary of $40,000 per year. Isaac Schaefer, eighth grade math teacher at RHS, beginning second semester, his salary will remain the same. Stephanie Brown, RHS guidance counselor, her salary will remain the same. And 10 days will be added, I assume that prorated her salary will say, or does she just absorb the 10 extra days and?
We counselors have 10 extra days added to their contract at the beginning of the year and the end of the year to wrap up the grades, confirm grades for graduation, and then at the beginning for scheduling purposes.
So her daily rate would be the same, but she will have a higher salary? She doesn't just have to absorb those 10 days? Cynthia Brown is RHS guidance secretary, hourly rate of $13.50. Jessica Bunford, temporary medical support system, support person at RHS, hourly rate of $16 an hour. Eric Davis, sixth grade math teacher at RMS, salary $60,700 per year, so someone with a lot of experience coming in. Great, Mrs. Murphy. Thelia Grossich, RMS night custodian, hourly rate of $12. Dustin May, maintenance specialist, ground specialist, hourly rate of $14.54. Catherine Lindsay, food service at Columbia Elementary, $12 an hour rate. Krista Dillingham, preschool instructional assistant at Columbia, hourly rate of $12. Connor Mannings, RHS night custodian, hourly rate of $12. Transfers, Amy Cooper, transfer from RHS instructional assistant to Columbia instructional assistant at the preschool, her rate will remain the same. Bobby Repogle, thank you, transfer to Mrs. DeBois's pre-kindergarten, January through March of 2022, at a rate of $140 per day. So you've got some dominos over there, Mr. Snyder. He has worked hard to set this up. Ashley DeBois will transfer to first grade, Mrs. Gutman's maternity leave, from January 1st to March 31st, and her pay will remain the same. And then Beth Brady will transfer from, to Mrs. Gutman's maternity leave, from March 31st through June 1st of 2022, and she will have a rate of $140 per day. At that point, Bobby will return to her original position, and Ashley will return to her original Salary corrections, Jessie Atkinson has 10 years of teaching experience, and Betsy Gardner has nine years of teaching experience. Stephen Kirk Sanders, his adjusted pay rate in transferring to the maintenance department will be $14.54 an hour. Winter intercession recommendations at RHS, language arts, Ryan Halt and Jamie Kirkwood, math, Ken Hughes and Maureen Tindy. FMLA requests from Mary Loving from November 3rd to December 1st, 2021. Katie Sanchez from December 20th, 2021, to March 28th, 2022. Pam Brower from January 12th, 2022, to February 14th, 2022. And Kelly Howard from November 18th, 2021, to January 4th, 2022. Barb Schwank has announced her retirement effective December 31st, 2021. Resignations, Jennifer Zartman, RHS Spanish teacher, effective November 19th, 2021. Jamie Runkel, instructional assistant at Riddle Elementary, effective December 21st, 2021. Kyle Hopkins, first grade maternity position and subbing for corporation, effective December 14th, 2021. Then we have recommendations for ECAs and CIA's. Columbia ECAs, Jill Weaver as mentor, Sydney Gutman as zebra zone, Jamie Johnson as the dyslexia coordinator, Brenda McLean for high ability, Kim Beal CIA coach, Stacia Conrad CIA coach, Michelle Broyette CIA coach, and Jill Weaver for music program. And at the high school, we have summer band, Ann Pepp Band is Val Beaman, choir Lisa McMillan. Academic competition for English, social studies, math, and science, all done by Chelsea Correll. The RHS adult farmer class, Justin Pearson, auditorium manager Lisa McMillan, RHS FFA, Justin Pearson, RHS art club Sandy Schaefer, RHS key club Michelle Gibson and Catherine Lucker. National Honor Society, Amy Blackburn, tri-epsilon, it's split between Brittany Piercy and Brittany Piercy. Brittany Piercy will do it all this time. FCC LA, Jenny Snyder and Alicia Walkman, junior class sponsor, which means prom, Hope Shali and Val Hoover. RHS newspaper is Laura, newspaper, I put out zebra tails, Laura Friend. Senior class sponsor Tony Stasiak, student council Jamie Kirkwood, yearbook Laura Friend. And we have a variety of CIA coaches, including Jessie Atkinson, Amy Blackburn, Tony Stasiak, Chad Thomas, Hope Shali, and Jenny Snyder, Title IX coordinator Abby Howderschel, high ability and building mentor Val Cooper. Is everybody, okay. So board, any questions about that?
You made those.
Everybody would like that, right? Is anybody listening? Now you have a quiz, so. So I will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
Salute.
Motion by Kyle.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes six zero. Welcome to your new position, Mrs. Brown. Nice to have you here. All right, now some overnight field trips, doing some fun stuff at least.
So many of the, all of these actually are field trips that had been standards within the district prior to COVID, trying to open those back up. We'll continue to monitor COVID with the other entities and organizations that hope to host these, but would recommend that the board approve these. The overnight field trip request by Justin Pearson is a trip, it's a leadership overnight stay at Trafalgar for FFA students. I think while they're down there, they also engage in community service there at Trafalgar at their camping site, which is a really good giving to others. Jenny Snyder takes the FCC LA leadership, or her FCC LA students to the leadership conference in Indianapolis there. They get to show their.
I'm sorry, is it Muncy?
Oh, I'm sorry, Muncy. They get to highlight their projects, the opportunity to engage with other students, and it's also leadership oriented. And then spring break at RMS, they had introduced a couple of years ago, a trip to Camp Tecumseh over spring break in that enrichment period, and they take a group of students and looking to bring that back, as we're able to, watching COVID numbers and understanding at that time.
If that's okay with the board, I'd like to approve them all at the same, or vote on them all at the same time. Any questions about any of those? If not, I'll make a motion to approve all three of those field trips.
Salute.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Kyle. Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes six zero. Leads us to superintendent business.
I'd like to begin by thanking Ted Wagner for his years of service to Rochester schools, even prior to myself, and I know the administrators are nodding their head as well. There were many phone conversations with Ted, a lot of advice, a lot of learning and growing under your leadership as well, so thank you for your service to Rochester schools. We have made a donation to the endowment fund, and then we also have some zebra wear for you so that you can continue to be the Rochester zebra community liaison out there for us. But thank you, Ted, for your leadership and helping me grow and learn and the administrative team as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And then I want to thank all of the, I know the teachers that are here, Hope for the association and the principals, the board, our community for successful first semester of school. It's been difficult, I think, that the community sees the buses moving and kids outside playing, and they think everything's going well. And I'll tell you, we're all paddling really, really hard to keep our heads above water and keep the schools open and the kids and the staff safe. So thank you for all of your hard work and support, and to the community as well for your support through this first semester.
Well, I'll echo that. I want to thank you, Ted, for what you have done for Rochester schools. Moving to local representation was key in a lot of the decisions that have been made, and you have had an integral part in that, and we thank you. And you have had an integral part in that and we thank you so very much. We hope that you enjoy having some Monday nights free. I mean, if you want to come in and watch or watch on Zoom, you know?
I would presumably. I appreciate the Board giving Lauren a chance to continue serving. The firm really appreciates that opportunity.
And also, I want to thank you, Dana, and your staff and the students. This, this is a very difficult time and I think even harder than the first year of the pandemic because I think we all hoped that it would be in a different place at this point. But you have provided a vital service to our community. Our community does not run without the schools running and it can be very frustrating, I'm sure. But you are all doing it and you're doing it well. And I hope and pray that you have a very restful break, that it truly is a time where you can take, take some time to separate out and maybe get some sleep and come back and we'll make it through another semester.
Before we go, very quickly, principals, Cassie will start with you and kind of mix things up just very quickly. Share with us, great thing that's been going on at RMS since our study session, maybe something you're working on behind the scenes and then anything you might need from the Board or from myself to support you.
So the most notable thing was today. Today is a great day at RMS. At last count, we had 62 community members coming for our etiquette lunch today in the four different sessions. And as we spoke earlier to how gracious our community is with donations, today they donated their time. And that's, there's no greater thing to donate. So it was amazing to watch the kids come in and look their best and, you know, their eyes light up with the decorations. So that was definitely a good day at RMS. Something we're working on behind the scenes is getting through tomorrow. Tomorrow's our PBIS day, so a lot goes on behind the scenes to get that going, to make it a fun day for everybody for the last day before break. So that's really what we're working on behind the scenes. What we need from the Board, just your continued support and we feel that. So thank you.
Jason?
Okay, well, things that have gone well over the past month, just, you saw the donations that we've got. And I think our primary focus for this past month has really been just taking care of our students. And that's really been a joint effort amongst the community and the Miracle Tree Shop with the Cop. We've got a lot of students that have received clothes, toys, just things that they need during this month. And it's been fantastic. You saw the donations with, for the coats, just for supplies, cleaning supplies, things like that. Everybody in the community just steps up and our kids are the recipients of that. So I think over the past month, I think you guys hit it, that that's been huge in the month of December for our students in particular. So that's, that's the thing that stands out the most to me for the month of December. For things that we've got going on kind of behind the scenes on our, we just approved and we didn't just approve. Jamie Johnson's been doing our dyslexia program and she does a corporation wide. But in January, when we return, we'll start meeting at grade levels to discuss the results of the dyslexia screeners that we have given this first semester. And there's a lot of work behind the scenes in that and the use of the data, looking at the data, going over it with the teachers so the teachers know kind of, you know, if a kid is just struggling for dyslexic reasons or if it's something else. So that's kind of what we've got planned for upcoming stuff. And as far as things that we need from the Board, I'll just echo what Cassie said, and great event, by the way, today. And that is just the continued support. We appreciate it and that's all we need right now.
I want to brag on one of our programs at the high school and that's the band program. When was it, two years ago, we hired Ms. Beaman to come in? She came in, there was probably maybe six kids in the band. She's been coming to the home sporting events. She did some in the football season, but she's come to basketball. And I've had 12 different parents call or come up to me at the games to brag on her program. She's got a jazz band she just had a concert with. She had a phenomenal band concert. So I wanted to give her some props. And as I was thinking about this this afternoon, she stuck her head in my office and almost in tears, wanted me to thank you guys for buying the new instruments that started to arrive in the corporation today. So I want to thank her. We got her from Ohio and she wants to stay in Rochester, Indiana. And looking at the numbers at the middle school, she's got something that could become pretty powerful in our corporation and it's good for our students. So I want to throw a big shout out to her for that. I guess behind the scenes, I'm a semester in at the high school. I got some ideas in my head and I'm going to start throwing at my leadership team and start to look at tweaking. And then that kind of just goes right into the third question when I bring those big ideas and we've narrowed them down. Just be behind us and know we're trying to do what's best for our community and for our students as I start to bring those to my staff and students. So thank you. And I don't know if you've got any questions about anything else, but Ms. Beaman deserved that shout out here this month, so.
Thank you. Will we get, will we get a heads up on your costume for tomorrow?
Jason?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Will we get a heads up on your costume for tomorrow?
Tomorrow, I will be the conductor for the Polar Express.
Tomorrow at the middle school, we'll have the Grinch and Sandy Lou move.
Heard that. Want to come hang out in the car line tomorrow? You can see the conductor and all the Polar Express.
That sounds, that's awesome. The kids, the kids really enjoy that. I hear about it, I hear about it fairly regularly. And for the record, I'm not the Grinch. Not tomorrow anyways. Thank you all.
Anything else from the Board?
I was at the etiquette thing and it was very nice today. That was a nice change of pace. It seemed like all the kids had fun. Yeah, it was very nice. And I would re-run an Oscar too. It's nice to come to a basketball game now and hear some band. It's been a while. And it's, you don't even get that at other schools either, so it's pretty cool.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Kyle, all right, so we are adjourned. Thank you.
Lots of, lots of sweets up here if anybody wants to grab one to go.